Good evening. Whoa, that's pretty loud, I'm sorry. Good evening, welcome to the Monday, October 26th, 2015. Sorry. How about now? Is that a little better? No, not really. Okay. Okay. Is that any better? Okay, great. Good evening again. Welcome to the Monday, October 26th, 2015, Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you're all here with us this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Here.
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Zee?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it? I don't believe we have any proclamations or special presentations, but I understand we have a few oaths of office to new boards and commission members, is that right? Would you like to call those folks up?
We have John Tesner for the Tree Commission and Julia Peterson for the Girls Home Advisory
Welcome. Thank you for coming out this evening and your willingness to serve our community.
And we also have Christina Goodwin for the Girls Home Advisory Board. So I'll have all three of you repeat after me and just state your name and your Board of Commission at the appropriate time. So I, state your name.
John Tesner.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the
Why don't you come on up and we can shake your hands and formally meet you all. Okay, is there anyone else to be sworn in? That's it? Okay, great. Why don't we go on to our summary of written comments?
Regarding Park Avenue and Spring Street, the following wrote to express concern about possible parking restrictions on Park Avenue and making Spring Street a two-way street were received. Two anonymous St. James parishioners, Janet and Richard Qualter, St. James parishioners, Joseph E. Early, Congressman Thomas Rooney, Klaus Schmidt, St. James parishioner. Regarding Mason Row, William Stubbs wrote to request that Council not approve the Mason Row project. He asked that a height variance not be granted if the project is approved. Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue, wrote in regard to the CACT review of Mason Row that the setbacks should be greater to allow for sidewalk seating for restaurants. Ms. Winters also wrote with ideas for an open market square concept for Mason Row. Rebecca Latourica, 205 Grove Avenue, wrote to say that the most recent designs for Mason Row are more attractive but express concerns about height amassing, Park Avenue views, the scale of the renderings presented by Spectrum Development, and the design of the hotel brand proposed for the site. Rob Sherman wrote to express strong support for the Mason Row project and asked that the Council consider that the project will keep revenue in the city and increase tax revenue. He encouraged the Council to consider multimodal transportation options for the project. Catherine and Ron Sekrist, 208 South Lee Street, wrote in favor of the Mason Row projects and a movie theater. Todd Freelandar, 801 Hillwood Avenue, wrote to oppose forwarding theater tax revenue from the Mason Row project to the developer. Alex Veruxis expressed concern about forwarding theater tax revenue from the Mason Row project to the developer. And then on other topics, David Johnson, 711 Poplar Drive, wrote to oppose tolls on I-66 as part of VDOT's I-66 multimodal project. Eric Schmidt wrote to express concern about getting a speeding ticket on Broad Street because the speed limit is lowered to 25 miles per hour in the city. And Grace Paris-Starbird submitted a report about her first meeting as a member of the Fairfax Falls Church Commission on Aging.
Thank you very much. Why don't we now move to our public speaking, our public speaker time? Anyone who wishes to address Council may do so at this time, or you may also do so when the particular matter you're here to speak upon comes up. But if you do speak, you have three minutes. If you could please state your name and address, that'd be most appreciated, and also fill out one of these green speaker slips and hand it to the clerk. So I'm going to go ahead and start with the first speaker, which is Mr. Tom Clinton. Mr. Clinton?
Good evening. My name is Tom Clinton, I live at 711 Hillwood Avenue. I would like to speak about the letter that I wrote three years ago to the judge in the Michael Gardner case. The first thing I must do is apologize to the girls. I then want to apologize to the parents for adding to their pain. Words can't express how sorry I am. I do accept full responsibility for writing the letter. I've apologized privately to one of the families involved, now I want to do so publicly. It's a testament to the strength and compassion of the parents that I spoke with that they accepted my apology. And I want to apologize to the community as a whole, and I hope that you too can forgive me, and we can all work together to heal this community. I wholeheartedly support the girls. Thank you.
Our next speaker, and actually will not be a speaker, but maybe a group of speakers, is a group from MEH. And I've got styrofoam recycling, but I also understood it might be robotics as well. So why don't you all come up and let's hear what you have to say.
All right. Good evening, we're part of Laker Box team called Global Robo. We attend Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School here in Falls Church. We're here to talk about the recycling policy on styrofoam and what we can do to change it. In our little city of Falls Church, there are a few problems involving trash. This year's problem will involve a robotics competition is Trash Trek, so we dug around to learn what problems of trash we have.
One of these problems is the fact that our little city, that in our little city, we do not have a recycling program in place for styrofoam, otherwise known as polystyrene. Polystyrene is called a, is grouped in the number six plastics, so it takes a really long time to decompose.
Each year, the U.S. produces 1.8 billion pounds of styrofoam and throws away an estimated 25 billion styrofoam cups each year, which is enough to circle the globe 436 times.
In New York, the State Supreme Court ruled that New York City could not ban styrofoam food containers because styrofoam is actually recyclable. It can be melted down and reformed, which saves costs, and also, we are asking the city to investigate the city, I mean, the possibility of recycling styrofoam. It could also join with other counties and cities and the state to accomplish this.
When not recycled, 99% of styrofoam ends up in landfills, taking thousands of years to decompose. Also, small pieces of styrofoam are a threat to local wildlife residing in streams and lakes. Then, after being consumed, it makes its way up to the food chain and harms everything in it. So if we recycle styrofoam, the whole world can transform. Thank you.
Thank you, that was great. Why don't you all come up forward and we'll get a photo with you all, maybe and your parents, if your parents would like to join you. But thank you for that very informative discussion. Mr. Shields, has the city looked into recycling styrofoam, or can you take another look at that and see what your thoughts are?
Well, I think it's a great thing to, a great thing for us to look into, because with the high amounts of packaging that exist, styrofoam is a real concern. And so I will find out the answer to that question. So I will find out the answer to that question, and I would like to get back with you so that we can work together on this issue. Okay. And we have your contact information, so we will follow up.
Thank you all. Our next speaker is Carrie Bruce. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Carrie Bruce, and I live on 125 West Greenway Boulevard, here in the city. I'm a board member of the Friends of Falls Church Homeless Shelter, and we wanted to let you know that in 2015, it's our 20th year of providing service and following our mission to provide housing for homeless residents during the cold winter months. We couldn't have done this and reached this milestone without the generous support of the city and the community here in Falls Church. On Saturday, the 7th of November, we are having a wine and cheese celebration from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Falls Church Episcopal Church, and we'd like to invite all of the Council members and members of the community to attend. I'll leave some brochures out, or a flyer out on the table outside on the hall, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your good work. Mr. Snyder, did you have something to say?
I just wanted, while you're here, to thank all the volunteers. This is a great example of the community and local government working together, and I was particularly proud of being on the Council when we first created this, when other places were shutting down their shelters. So I want to thank you again for all that you're doing in support of it. Thank you. And please pass that on to all the volunteers.
Right, I will do so, thank you, sir.
Okay, our next speaker is Rohini Winters.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I'm Rohini Winters, 324 Grove Avenue, and I would like to clarify my comment. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting of this Council last week, hoping to make comment regarding the voluntary concession that I was only then made aware of. The tax abatement proposal from Spectrum Development feels like they just lobbed a grenade in the middle of City Council, and they expect you to either negotiate or decide at the same time as the second reading on whether you will impose a new tax on the consumers of the City of Falls Church Theater, should it be built, at a rate of 10% on a ticket. That could amount to $1.50 per ticket, and I don't know if that would persuade moviegoers to walk to our theater, or drive, or Metro, or to go to Tyson's or Maryfield, where there is no such theater tax at that rate. Then, the Spectrum developer asks that you refund, or rebate, or return all such local theater tax collections to them for the first 15 years of the theater's operation. They only commit to a 10-year lease of a theater at time of second reading, for the special exception to become final, and yet they want 100% of tax to return to them for 15 years. For the 16th through the 20th year, they ask for 90% of the tax, local theater tax, to return to them. All this to offset construction costs or finance their project, I'm not really clear yet. I was unable to make comment at the EDC, and yet you were asking the city manager to negotiate on certain points of the VCs, and I'm concerned that if this week is underway and the city manager is negotiating, that even the EDA, who wasn't present at that meeting, would not be able to weigh in on those VCs. And so I came before you tonight to ask you to please instruct the city manager not to approve 100% of a tax, not to impose a 10% theater tax, and not to agree to a 15-year tax construct when there's only a commitment for a 10-year theater operation. There's more, everybody needs to read it. I was hoping for good news, I was hoping to stand before you and say something positive about Mason Row, but tonight I cannot.
Thank you, thank you very much. Marty Baer on Halloween Painting, come on up.
Thank you, that was quick. I was just going to say thank you to all the merchants and students for making this year's Halloween painting the largest and most expansive ever. Forty-five businesses were involved, and 150 painters. And I feel that it's such a happy event, and kind of reminds me of the importance of the village and the little city. When I'm sitting out there, people walk by, they donate, this is a great thing, I'm not involved, and it's just a really nice event, so. Just wanted to thank everybody publicly.
Thank you, thank you for all your great work. I know we can see that driving up and down Broad Street. Job well done. Our next speaker is Jeanne DeRozz, followed by David Russell.
Mayor Tarter and members of City Council, my name is Jeanne DeRozz, and I live at 502B Walden Court. Having heard Mr. Clinton's comments earlier, I now know that you all are, of course, aware that a local online blog this week published letters that were written in 2012 requesting leniency in the sentencing of Falls Church resident Michael Gardner, following his conviction for the molestation of two 10-year-old Falls Church girls. While I find many things about those letters troubling, there's one thing I find troubling from the perspective of how we, as a community, govern ourselves and of the conduct we expect from our public servants. Some of the letters were written by Falls Church City officials. While these officials have free speech rights, those rights are in their personal capacity. I note that none of the letters were written by officials on Falls Church letterhead, and two of the officials merely referred to their current positions in the body of the letters. That said, one official made reference to his official title in the signature block of his letter. While I cannot claim to know what he was thinking, I know that any reader of the letter could reasonably assume it was intended to lend his view additional weight, or to permit the inference that he was speaking on behalf of the community, and indeed, the Council, the City Council itself, and not merely for himself. In my view, this is a serious misuse of position and a breach of the public trust. I don't think I'm alone in this view. If you've been reading the public comment, you know that your citizens are disappointed, saddened, and angered by this turn of events. Excuse me. And there's justifiable concern about whether our city government, entrusted with the duty to serve and protect all of us, is instead focused on serving and protecting only a well-connected few. We need to find a path forward from this. We need to find a way to mend the breach in the public trust, to restore confidence in the integrity of our city leadership. We have long defined ourselves as a community that seeks excellence in education. We should now commit ourselves to demonstrating excellence in self-government, not just with transparency, but with character. Adopting a set of ethics standards would be a good place to start. I'm here to ask you to begin work on a code of ethics or standard of conduct that would provide guidelines and rules for City, for Council itself and City employees, to address concerns like proper use of official title and official resources, preferential treatment and conflicts of interest. I ask you to direct the city attorney to survey model codes of conduct for municipalities and codes that have been enacted in localities in recent years for guidance. Upon a report and recommendation, within the next calendar year, I would challenge you to enact an effective code of conduct to require mandatory annual training for yourselves and City employees, and to require yourselves and all City employees to certify that you have read the code, received training, understand the code, and will not violate it. I know that you are busy addressing the many challenges that face our city, but I think this is an essential task now. Strong ethics are fundamental to good government. Having rules in place will help build and rebuild and enhance our unethical culture in our city. Then our citizens can be confident that in tackling the many challenges we face together, the decisions you make and the actions you take serve the public as a whole and not just a select few. It's the right thing to do, and this is the right time to do it. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you all for your public service.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Russell.
I apologize for coming here in exercise gear, I'm normally coaching a soccer practice right now, but I wanted to be here tonight, so I left that a little bit early, so I could share some thoughts with you. My name is David Russell, I live at 609 Poplar Drive in Falls Church City. I fully support Jeanne DeRozz's request to adopt a new ethics code governing your conduct and that of City employees. Every elected official and City employee should be prohibited from using their official titles and by implication, the public trust and the voice of our community in any communication seeking to influence government action on behalf of a private citizen. The fact that a sitting council member and other prominent City officials asked a judge to go easy on a pedophile who molested girls in our community is deeply disturbing. That they use their official titles in this effort deserves a strong rebuke, and whatever actions are necessary to ensure they don't do it again. I'd also like to offer a personal comment about this dark chapter in our city's history. Shame on all of us that we live in a community that allows its leaders to think these actions are acceptable. It should be obvious that not all crimes carry the same weight in the public's view. Michael Gardner wasn't convicted of tax evasion or securities fraud, he didn't get in a fight after having too much to drink. Michael Gardner sexually molested several prepubescent girls over multiple occasions, girls that lived here in Falls Church with us. They attended our wonderful schools with our own kids. But when a jury heard DNA evidence and the direct testimony of his victims, and decided that Michael Gardner had sexually abused these girls in his basement, some community leaders took his side over theirs. That is shameful. But that's our city. It's the one you lead and the one we live in today. The folks who wrote these letters may think they occupy some moral high ground based on loyal friendship, but they're wrong. That high ground belongs to the victims who testified against Michael Gardner. No one who wrote these letters stands anywhere near them. I urge you to adopt an ethics code that prevents you from using the imprimatur of Falls Church City when seeking leniency for pedophiles. With any luck, the voters will make sure Michael Gardner's friends aren't in office long enough to embarrass us like this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Kenny Curry.
Although I'm not a citizen of this city in Falls Church, I have had a business here since 1993. My children started at St. James in 1986. I understand that it's a GoFundMe to recognize these girls, and all I wanted to say is that I have $200 cash from Falls Church City-Senoco to help these girls recover from the abuse that she received from Michael Gardner.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it for our speakers. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address City Council at this time? You'll have an opportunity to do so if you wish to speak at a matter later in the hearing, but if you'd like to speak now, you should do so. Put a slip up right now. Seeing none, we're going to move beyond the public comment. Mr. Duncan, I understand you have a statement you'd like to read.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized for three minutes? Thank you. I want to thank those who have come here before us tonight. Special thanks to Tom Clinton, whose eloquence and brevity I will not be able to equal. When the TV reporter came to my door Friday, the question she asked was, "Are you sorry for writing the letter?" Well, of course, I'm sorry that what I did has caused such pain in our community. Last Wednesday, the day after the story was published in the Falls Church Post, I wrote and posted on Facebook and the Falls Church Post a statement that began with an admission that I had clearly misjudged Mike Gardner's character. Quote, "When Mike Gardner was arrested for and convicted of molestation, I was shocked. This was simply not the man I knew or thought I knew. But I accepted the verdict of the trial and said so in my September 2012 letter to the court," end quote. I went on with 500-word explanation of why I wrote a letter to the judge, spoke of the wrenching twists and turns of the appeal, the retrial, and on and on. I've come to understand since I wrote that statement that I should be much more direct. So let me say this to the victims and their parents. I apologize for writing the letter to the judge. I regret that my writing the letter caused you agony. I ask you to forgive me for writing a letter that I now understand made you feel ignored and diminished. I want to connect personally with the victims' parents, but unlike Tom, I do not know them personally. I'm not comfortable cold-calling them or just showing up at their door. I have reached out to the Rice family through some of my friends who do know them. I'm following the Rice family's lead as to when we should talk. I'm told they may not be ready for a week or so. I will respect their wishes and their privacy. I'm advised that when we do meet, I should do less talking and more listening. I promise to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The issue of code of conduct has been brought to us, and I would ask the city attorney to begin the research effort to look at codes of conduct in other contexts, see what models there may be out there for us to work from. There are a lot of questions, the contexts, for example, what was mentioned tonight, but there are lots of other contexts that may be involved, so I hope you can begin the research, and I'd like to take up the issue as is requested by our citizens. So you're nodding yes, so let the record reflect that the answer is yes, that you'll do that. Report back to us, and we'll get the process started.
Yes, I'll begin looking into that.
Great. And I would encourage our citizens, well, we've gotten some ideas tonight, some additional ones would be appreciated. I have my own ideas, and we can begin working on this, so thanks for those comments. Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of comments on I-66 and Metro. Do you want me to sort of save those for later?
Yes.
In the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'd like the city manager to report on a power outage that affected about 6,000 customers in Northern Virginia, including City Hall and some others in the City of Falls Church. I think it's very, very important for people to have a quick after-action report on that, if you will. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Baruch?
Thank you. You'll have to bear with me, because I didn't know what I was going to say this evening, or how I was going to address the issue of the Mike Gardner trial. So what I will say is, the idea of having a code of conduct is one worthy that we should further explore. But sometimes judgment, you can't set into standards, and there's things that people should know, right or wrong. And in fact, the Council touched on this earlier, as far as sort of conduct for how we were going to use titles and how we were going to interact in virtual cyberspace, for example. Our rules, they're not per se conduct, but rules or procedure specifically state that when it comes to online posting, et cetera, and I'm going to quote, "City council who posts should stress that they're posting in individuals and not speaking on behalf of the City Council as a body." And then it goes on further about not getting in public discussions over blogs. So my point is that this is something that should have been thought about, about using official titles. As I sit here as a fellow council member and as a fellow City official, I'm somewhat appalled, embarrassed... somewhat appalled, embarrassed for the actions of some city officials, and I'm glad to hear that they've apologized. And there's a lot more healing that needs to happen. So I support the notion of having a code of conduct, but at some point, individuals need to take responsibility for their actions of right and wrong and sound judgment, and certainly as elected officials, we should be held accountable to that. That said, as a father of a two-year-old daughter now, I can only imagine the pain that the families and the victims have gone through. And I just wanted to know, let you all know, if you're listening, that my heart goes out to the victims and also the families involved. And I stand behind you and in front of you as we move forward. And my thoughts and prayers go out to the families and victims. And if any of them wishes is to contact me, my phone number and email address, et cetera, is posted, and I'm happy to, to engage, but I'll leave it up to the families to, to do that out of respect of their privacies. But I, as one council member, stand with you, in front of you, and behind you all at the same time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to say anything? If I could, then maybe I have a few remarks I'd like to make. I too am in favor of a code of ethics used by other jurisdictions, other localities close by, including Arlington, and believe we need to hold ourselves to the highest standards, not just the minimum standards required by law, but the highest standards. I also support review of procedures to ensure that victims are treated with sensitivity and receive the support they deserve and to raise public awareness of this important issue. I've spoken to two of the families, and I understand the, the girls are doing remarkably well under the circumstances, which I think is a testament to the strength of their families. I also understand the girls appreciate the recent outpouring of support, including the "We Support the Girls" movement. Unfortunately, I'm not sure they always felt the city was behind them, and I apologize for that as well. It's very unfortunate. I hope from tonight's meeting that it's clear that the city does stand united behind the girls, and you have my pledge that we will do all we can to support the victims and their families going forward. You all are in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we move on to the next item if we can, unless there's anyone else wishes to speak? Mr. Baruch?
Sounds like there was some consensus in support for doing some type of further, and I would say it's already there, but perhaps refining it and adding more to it to have a code of conduct. So I believe in deadlines to get things moving. Can we at least get a sense from the city attorney of when we can see a draft of that? Because I would like to see that by our next work session, if, if other council members feel like we can take it up then. But I feel that there's, which is next week?
I thi, I think that there is not a work session next week.
On the ninth?
The next one would be on the ninth, or, okay. And I can certainly work on trying to get something put together by that time.
So the next work session's the ninth?
It's, yes, the ninth is a regular meeting, right? And the six, it would be the 16th would be the next work session?
Well, can we at least get a draft of it before that? So perhaps by our next meeting, at least get a draft of it. That way we can comment on it or be ready to comment on it.
I can try to do that, yes.
Thank you.
I will do that.
Okay. Why don't we go on to council requests? Mr. Snyder, it sounded like you had a few that were outstanding.
Yes, yes, I did. There are two issues which we can either deal with council requests or report at the end, but I wanted to report back to folks on I-66 and Metro. I want to do that now. I won't take long, about two or three minutes on each. The Transportation Planning Board voted to continue the work on the I-66 Inside the Beltway project. I had the opportunity to express the concerns the city wanted me to express and obtained a very firm commitment from VDOT to bring back to the Transportation Planning Board the issue and in the meantime, maintain the dialogue with the citizens and local governments. The reason why several months is needed is the framework agreement that will help to define the rights and access the city of Falls Church will have to the transit money will probably not be decided until December. So it made no sense to bring back I-66 to the Transportation Planning Board before that was done. So that's kind of the status of things. Secondly, with regard to Metro, we have previously collectively, I have and the boards that I serve on have expressed concern about the deterioration of Metro and actions will likely be forthcoming at the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, calling for not only better safety, different safety oversight, but more sufficient, adequate, and appropriate funding from the federal government for Metro, which has been lacking, which I think is one of the root causes. So I wanted to report back to, to the council on both of those issues. Pleased to take any questions or comments tonight, and we'll, we'll be pleased to work through any questions or comments that council or our citizens have later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other council comments? Yes.
Just on the I-66 transportation plan, Vice Mayor Snyder, thank you for all your efforts. You know, I think the votes ended up where they did, and I think overall, we probably did the best that we could there. But I think working on the agreement and making sure that Falls Church receives its fair share, given the voting structure is going to be key. So I know Cindy's probably working on that with, with Carol. So if we can just make sure that, that we try to put that into the agreement, solidify that, given, given the voting structure, I think that's going to be the key, key for us as we forward, move forward. And I think I forwarded some of the comments that I had received to the city clerk on this issue, but I think that there is a sense in the community that VDOT has been doing a lot of, for lack of a better word, lip service and not really listening to the public comments that they received on the I-66 plan. So I'd share that, and I think the city clerk hopefully can get some of those comments around as well. Thank you.
Okay. Unless there are any other comments, I'd like to call Ms. Messner to the, to the di, not to the dais, I guess, to the podium. I understand Mr. Shields has won an award that we'd like to share our congratulations with him and the community. Could you tell us about that?
Thank you for this opportunity. I did want to report to council and the community that Friday evening, COG had the graduation for their IRE program, which is the Institute for Excellence, and this is a great leadership program with some very strong objectives for helping to build theoretical, good middle managers with theoretical knowledge, but also practical experience in local government. And over the years that it's been adopted, they've had 13 cohorts and over about 330 graduates, of which the city of Falls Church has been honored to send 14, and we just had two graduate on Friday night from our assessor's office and Public Works Recycling. And as part of that, that program's only successful with the strong leadership of our local government managers. And this year, the city of Falls Church especially honored that Mr. Wyatt Shields was recognized with the Visionary Leadership Award, and I wanted to make sure council and the community was aware of that, because I know Mr. Shields was not likely to announce it this evening. So our congratulation, the staff was very appreciative of Wyatt's support of this program.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Shields. Why don't you take a, take a step up and we'll congratulate you formally. I, I think this is fantastic. I know you work very hard behind the scenes and maybe don't get the recognition you deserve, so congratulations.
Well, thank you. The, the night really belongs to the graduates. Lisa Freeman in the assessor's office graduated from the COG Institute of Regional Excellence on that night, and Chris McGow, our solid waste coordinator, also graduated. He had started the program actually with Fairfax County, and then when he transferred to the city, he, we allowed him to continue with it and he graduated. So the, the real kudos is to them, and they'll bring a lot of value back to the organization for that. And, but thank you for bringing this up. It was very nice. It was very touching to get that award, and I appreciate you mentioning it tonight.
Congratulations. Okay, why don't we go ahead? Is there a report of city manager, Mr. Shields?
There are a few things that I did want to touch base on. As the community is aware, the, the city is suspending the school bus arm enforcement program for vehicles that cross school buses when the, when the red lights are flashing in terms of the photo automatic enforcement of that. Our police officers will still be, of course, writing citations whenever that is seen, and the enforcement of it will, will continue. However, the photo enforcement piece of it is suspended pending further action by the General Assembly. And the reason for that is the, the attorney general issued an opinion, and that opinion affects the administration of the program, and we're going to respect that opinion. It is only an opinion, but out of respect for the attorney general's opinion, we'll suspend that program. And we will also be talking with a legislative committee about having language to go to the General Assembly to allow the program to continue. In the meantime, we will, for payments that come in, that, for violations that are outstanding right now, if payments still come in, we'll return those payments back and, and no longer administer violations the way that we have been for two years. It's been a very successful program, we believe. We think that it has changed driver behavior for the, for the good, and we also believe that this is a very serious infraction and it needs to be enforced. It is very difficult to enforce through normal police work just because of the practicalities of it, and it has been very effective using the, the photo enforcement tool to do that. And we have that program in partnership with the school division. The school division actually was the lead agency on it, and the city of Falls Church of course performed the law enforcement function, which is necessary for it on the back end. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. I have a couple of other things to report on as well.
So if I may, I've got a question or two for you. Are other jurisdictions also following the AG's opinion, or are other jurisdictions decided to proceed?
It's my understanding that only two jurisdictions were using this enforcement method, and that was Arlington and Falls Church, and both have suspended their programs. What had come up was other jurisdictions looking into possibly doing this had requested the opinion from the AG's office.
And so what's the likelihood we're going to be able to get this corrected? Because this is an important program.
I don't think anything is easy in, in the General Assembly's, so I think we're going to have to work for it, and we're also going to have to be careful about the impact on the photo red program, which is another program that we value for its public safety benefit and, and enforcing photo running red lights. And, and so we do intend to work the issue with our peers around the state, but we, we don't think it'll be necessarily an easy fix.
And is there any possibility in the meantime of having city unmarked police cars trailing buses to try to see if we can keep the rate of violations down?
I will talk with the chief about what we can do as a practical matter. There, I think actually having marked vehicles to do it is, is well. The main thing is to have vehicles not passing the school, the school buses. That's, that's the main goal. The difficulty for, if police are doing their normal business and they happen to see it, it typically is a rather dangerous maneuver that they would need to execute in order to pursue the violator, and that, that's true for red light violations as well. And so that's the difficulty with normal enforcement.
Baruch?
So on a note of obviously protecting children, because that's, that's what this is about, and that's why the, the program is there, and sort of thinking outside the box, as I read that opinion, is that it has to do with who serves or how the notices need to be served? That it needs to be served in person by an enforcement official? So is there any reason why selectively the program can't be run, ticket issued, but the summons or citation be issued by a police officer, knock on the door at the known address based on DMV records?
We've discussed that, and there are
Obviously, there's costs.
Tremendous practical difficulties of doing that, and, but we have had that discussion internally.
Well, I would, I would encourage that rather than turning off the system completely, that there could be occasions where there are, say, egregious violators that should be cited, and I think there's nothing more significant than a door knock by a police officer at your door that you ran a stop sign on a, on a bus. So there may be things short of turning off the system completely that we can do. And I'm sure our bus drivers can tell us, hey, this incident just happened and this was sort of, they're all big deals, but situations that are perhaps worthy of, of the extra effort.
We will look into that.
Thank you. And if you can report back on that too, Mr. Shields?
I mean, I wonder, just sending a warning letter, you know, in terms of you still got the information and you're not technically imposing a fine, but sending the warning letter so people know their behavior's being observed or whatever, just to alter the behavior. But it's a serious problem when people are not stopping, and you got young kids at danger. So we need to do all we can to, to keep the compliance high. Is there any other comments about this? Mr. Shields, did you have anything else in your report?
Just a, a note on the Mason Row project. There was a comment about that tonight, and I did want the community to know that the, the Mason Row developer there has submitted a proposal to the city for the admissions tax, and that was referenced in, in the comments tonight. That is being reviewed right now by staff and by the city's outside financial consultant, and we'll provide the results of that review to the council at your next work session, again on November 9th. But I think it is important for the community to know that while this has been discussed, it was not a surprise that we received it, because the developer has indicated that this was something that they thought that they were going to need to propose. They've been saying that for months, but there have not been negotiations to date. We have asked them if, if this is something they were serious, that they thought was going to be needed, to put it in writing and, and make a proposal to us, and then from there, we would conduct negotiations after analysis. And so that first step now has happened. It happened in, in the month of October, and now we will finish that analysis and then brief the council and then take next steps in negotiations based on that briefing. And so I wanted the, the council just to be aware of, of those steps in the process and that there are no agreements certainly have been made either verbally or certainly in, in writing on this proposal, but it, but it is being analyzed. And then lastly, just on a very positive note, I want to thank all those who came to the tree planting event. This is always a hallmark of the spring and the fall. Our partnership with Vipus, we had a good turnout on Saturday and planted, I believe, 24 trees, and that, our next tree planting will be on Sunday, I'm sorry, on Saturday, November 7th at 8:30 a.m. at 10:15 Parker Street. And much appreciation to Seth Hemingway and all the volunteers who turn out to make that happen each year.
Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, why don't we go?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, two quick, two quick items. I think you were going to report on the power outage, right?
Yes, thank you. Last night, we had a power outage that affected the city of Falls Church, and Cindy Mester, if she could come and just give a quick report on what her knowledge is right now in terms of what Dominion has informed us about this power outage, and also just very briefly on reliability work, an update on reliability work with Dominion, which has been a focus over the past several years.
Thank you for the opportunity. There was an outage yesterday affecting 6,000 customers. Some of those were in Fairfax County Falls Church and a large number in the city of Falls Church. It was the result of an underground cable failure at their Falls Church substation, which is one of the two substations that feed power into the city, and it's on the Route 29 towards Maryfield side of the city. That failure did take out the 6,000 customers for about two and a half hours. Because of past infrastructure work, they were able to incrementally bring people on by switching circuits, and so they were able to bring people on quicker than they would have in the past. This was through just an age of equipment. They're still conducting their cause for the actual failure, but it was They're still conducting their cause for the actual failure, but it was not from construction or somebody cutting the cable inadvertently. The effort today was fully on restoring the power and fixing the underground and because of that past infrastructure work with closures and ability to switch circuits, they were actually able to do that without taking any other customers back out of service. City Hall was impacted during that time, which as we know is the police station and our emergency operations center, but our generators were fully operational and the IT system stayed up and so we did not have any public safety impact. We had six traffic signals that were impacted with the power outages, but our work over the last couple of years to install batteries on the traffic signals and/or have generators on standby were successful in deployment, so we had no intersection safety issues. And Dominion was very responsive when we called in the outage to address those issues. Be glad to answer any questions and we'll continue to work with Dominion.
Mr. Baruch?
So, having lived through several episodes with Dominion and I commend city staff's work with trying to get Dominion to be more responsive to our citizens and also our business community. When it comes to City Hall and critical infrastructure, that was sort of one of our main points that we were trying to work with Dominion on. If you recall, the derecho and the water tower issues that we had and the pumping stations. With the infrastructure in City Hall and public safety, is there any mechanism where Dominion, when they know it's that widespread of an outage and it's hitting critical infrastructure, that they reach out to either yourself or to the chief or to Mr. Shields to let them know that this is going on? I mean, this happened pretty late at night.
Dominion has a list of our priority facilities and if we hadn't already sort of simultaneously put in the ticket to Dominion that we were out because dispatch knows immediately to report that, they would have escalated it back to us to let us know that a priority facility was out. The reality is if it's City Hall, we're probably going to know concurrently. I do want to note that because of the derecho and the issues we had in the past, Dominion did a major infrastructure correction that would be on our Arlington side of 66 feeding the City Hall Community Center, Community Center being our emergency shelter. And with that infrastructure repair replacement and also once again the ability to shift circuits, we actually have not lost power at City Hall for three years until the incident of last night. So we've had some major improvements in reliability.
Cindy, let me ask the question another way. Yes, we're going to know obviously before you get the call, just we're likely to call it in, but is dispatch and others getting, well, restoration time is going to be between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning or is city staff getting some more detailed information when it comes to critical infrastructure? And that was one of the sticking points about sort of their ETAs and the loosey-goosey non-metrics of Dominion when it comes to critical infrastructure. So I just want to make sure that they're filling what they seem to have suggested that they were going to have better communications.
We have significantly better communication and processes and we have key escalation paths on both sides, so they know who to contact here and vice versa. In the midst of the immediate crisis, whether it's weather or like when the whole substation went down last night, they cannot immediately give us an estimated time of restoration because they need to assess it. So they start assessing it and immediately trying to fix it, but as they know, they provide us updated information.
So were you getting that this last go around?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just raise it so that citizens can have a better understanding of some things that never reached the headlines but are of a concern of this council and the city staff working to protect the citizens. Second point I wanted to make is, city manager, I wonder if you could report to us. I think you had a meeting with St. James, did you, this past week or so? We continue to get a lot of correspondence. I, for one, don't see the merit of making Spring Street two ways, but I mean, I know that issue came up and others. Do you want to report to us about that meeting? I think we're waiting to hear the results of your meeting with the neighborhood in St. James.
Yes, that is correct. We met with the church leadership and with representatives of Park Avenue just over a week ago. And so there are two issues that we've been getting lots of commentary on and one is two-way spraying and the second is the possibility of having resident-only parking on the north side of Park Avenue, which could affect the parishioners when they're going to services. On the two-way of spraying, I think it's important for everybody to understand that that's a language that's in the West Broad Street area plan as a recommendation for consideration in the future. And two-waying the street, I think from an urban planning perspective and from a transportation planning perspective, is generally favored over a one-way street in terms of increasing the overall utility of that public right-of-way. However, it is simply proposed for a long-range plan. There are dozens and dozens of long-range strategies in that plan and we will prioritize those. And so one of the messages for the church is even if the plan is adopted, that does not mean that this is going to immediately be studied and considered. But the church has made it very clear to us that they view it as a negative, that they would view it as a safety concern, that they would have for parishioners walking from the parking lot across the street, for students walking to their daily math services from the school, and also for their choreography of how they arrange for funeral processions and the like. And so we've gotten those comments. I think that that's going to weigh in. The Planning Commission is going to have a hearing on this on November 2nd and possibly take its action very soon in November in terms of its recommendation to the city council. And so we've let the church know and others know that the Planning Commission is soliciting comment on the whole plan and including on that particular piece of it. On the positive side for Spring Street, we are in engineering right now to put in a raised speed table and a marked pedestrian crossing, which the church has asked for. And so we're doing the designs for that and we'll work with the church on those designs and I think that that will be implemented in the spring. So then getting to the parking issue on North Park, as the council is well aware of, we've received a petition asking for resident-only parking on the north side of the street and we received this petition over 14 months ago. And we have taken time just to talk about this with the church because if it were implemented today, the principal impact would be on church operations. And I believe that the real nexus of the petition or any action taken by the city really should be tied to the development that is proposed at Mason Row and that if that produces increased demand for parking on the street, we want to regulate that and mitigate any impacts from Mason Row on the street. And so then the issue would be, in trying to address that problem, would we also be addressing, impacting the church parking as well? What the resolution of our meeting last week was, that we will, that the church is getting much more involved in trying to, on its own motion and through its own activism with its parishioners, to decrease the, increase the use of the parking lots and decrease the use of the streets for their parking. And so we think that actually is probably the best solution if that is successful. But, so we have a three-month trial period to give the church time to ramp up that effort and the agreement was we'll revisit the issue in February. And also in February, we'll, I think, know at that time whether the Mason Row project has its entitlements. We were clear to them that there were a lot of work that needed to be done on the Mason Row project, but at any rate, by February, we anticipate that a decision on the entitlements at least would be made for that project and that would be part of the, of what we would try to address with respect to parking on Park Avenue.
Mr. Baruch?
So, I'm going to sound like a broken record on this, but I'm going to say it again. We're also going to be looking fairly soon about our code requirements for parking. So this is not an issue that's going to go away and my hope is while I won't be seated here at least during the next council, at least for now, that these are not, parking issues shouldn't be political issues. They should be issues that are handled by the city manager through the appropriate channels. So I am somewhat disappointed that it's gone to this point. I was hoping that it was going to be managed at least on Park and St. James and the developer in a way that didn't sort of become a letter-writing campaign and that's fine that it has, but you know, first and foremost, these policies and issues should be handled directly by the manager's office and the subordinate offices. So moving forward that we don't, knowing that we're going to be revamping our parking specifically in commercial and mixed-use projects, et cetera, that the council doesn't own it, the city manager's got authorities to deal with these issues and that we don't sort of transfer the responsibilities to our citizens to sort of fight it against each other and amongst each other when it comes to parking, especially when it comes to infill developments, that they be sorted out between the manager, the developer and to coming to consensus. So, you know, and this isn't going to be the only time that we're going to address these. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. And then Ms. Oliver.
This is completely off-topic of what we're talking about, but I don't want to miss the opportunity right now to say what many in the community didn't say for the last four years to the families of those girls. And that is that, and I'm just speaking as a parent here and this has really been on my mind, is that you guys have been through so much in the last four years and so many in the community have supported you, have supported your children, have been proud of your children and not known what to say. So I feel like right now, I don't know what to say. I need to say that you've been through a lot and many, many, many of us have wanted to be there with you, not wanted to ask who you were, not wanted to destroy your privacy or confidentiality, but I, and I think I speak for many in the community when I say that our hearts have been with you for a long time and we would like to going forward be able to support you in the way that you feel is appropriate. And that's all I can say as a council member, as a parent and someone, and I think everyone in this room practically is a parent and has been amazed and humbled by what your kids have been able to do and what you have done and how you've spoken out and done the right thing and I think you've really could teach us all a lesson in being able to do the right thing at the right time and being able to forgive and move forward and make the best of tough situation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Oliver?
Sorry, to go back to the parking. That's okay. I just wanted to ask the city manager whether, knowing that as the region grows in population and that there's increasing pressure on our streets and our parking, whether we have a policy within the city that allows us to designate portions of street parking for folks with disabilities that may need priority access to some locations.
Yes, we do and any citizen who needs an accommodation such as that can contact either me or the city's Department of Public Works. We have a process by which these are handled on a regular basis.
Okay, unless there's anything else relating to the city manager's report, why don't we move on to business on the agenda? Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
TO 15-12 is an ordinance to amend ordinances 1934 and 1935 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2016 for the general fund, school operating fund and capital improvement projects fund.
Mr. LaContra?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I think maybe we'll double team on this. I think one of the things that I'd like to do, just in terms of a summary for the public, this is before the council for second reading, but just in terms of the numbers of what is asked for in this budget amendment. $565,808 of this budget amendment is for new federal and state grants that the city has obtained since the beginning of the fiscal year. $242,871 is a request for an appropriation of bond proceeds for bonds that were issued for capital projects in August. $277,000 is a carryforward of building permit fees collected last year to ensure that we have funds to conduct inspections of projects under construction. And then lastly, we have a request for $186,000 as a carryforward of unspent funds from FY15 to fund two positions that are, that have, I think, probably been the majority part of the discussion of the council's deliberation of this budget amendment. In addition to those two positions, there's $25,000 of unspent funds from FY15 that would be carried forward for specific small transportation projects in the city. The two positions that are in this proposed budget amendment, one is $80,000 to fund a transportation planner position and this position is geared towards really doing two principal tasks. One is to implement and carry out neighborhood traffic calming projects in the city and second, to help us with all of the regional transportation work that is happening right now, to help make sure that the city's interests are represented in these regional deliberations about the allocation of funds and also the establishment of policy about how those funds should be allocated. There is a great deal of money at stake in terms of that regional activity. Just to put it into context, in our capital improvements program, we have about $14 million worth of projects identified over the next five years that we can carry out if we're able to access these state and federal funds that are coming through, largely through the regional deliberative process. Among that money is the annual appropriation of taxes that city people pay through the hotel tax and through the other NVTA-related taxes that go into the regional pool and then are distributed through the NVTA. And so that position is to help us gain those funds for useful purposes, for pedestrian improvements and street improvements here in the city. Secondly, the new position of the environmental program coordinator, also similar to the transportation position, is proposed for funding this fiscal year and it's understood that there's not, this is a term position unless we can build it into the FY17 budget and that's true for both of these positions, the transportation planner and the environmental program coordinator. The environmental program coordinator will assist the city and the, I think, two, also two specific things. One is to work to further the city's efforts towards energy efficiency and we've taken steps in the past to measure our energy usage citywide and also community-wide. And the next steps are to establish goals for reducing that energy usage, to become more efficient in our energy usage, lower our costs, but also meet our goals for carbon emission reduction as part of our climate change efforts in the city. We do believe that there are grant funds that are out there that will help us with this work. We will be bringing those grant applications forward in the coming months. There are no guarantees on that. That money is very competitive, but currently, we do not have the staff capacity to do either the energy efficiency work that this project is designed to do or to pursue these grants that could help bring in funds, to help us do the real practical things such as moving, having PV panels on city facilities or school facilities or a whole host of measures that we can take more aggressive steps in becoming a more energy-efficient organization. So those are a quick summary of, I think, some of the key issues in this budget amendment and we'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Before we get to any questions, I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address council on this matter? If you wish to do so, please submit a speaker slip and now would be the time to speak. Otherwise, it looks like there's no one who wishes to speak. I'm going to close the matter of the public and go ahead and resume with questions and comments from council. Ms. Conley, did you have a comment?
Mr. Shields, the lines 16 and 17 here, the background, I think that's really important that people understand that every year, council adopts a budget amendment in the fall that reflects changes that have occurred since the budget was adopted. A lot of times- A lot of times, members of the community, and I know myself before I was on council, didn't really pay attention to the annual budget cycle, and I think it's important to know that when we get to the fall every year, that there's a shuffling around of money and unspent funds, so there's nothing out of the ordinary in what you're doing this year, and it's great that people are paying attention and wondering about it, but I think that's really important to note, that we're carrying forward unspent funds and identifying new grants.
Okay, are there other comments? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I fully support the funding of the two term positions. I've said that before. We are at the crossroads of having insufficient staff to implement many of the projects that we've received grant funding for or have available to us, and it would be simply wrong to let that money not be within our grasp because we have inadequate transportation staff to plan and to implement and manage these projects. Moreover, the environmental program coordinator is really an investment, a prudent investment in the future of our role in the region, the, our ability to attain air quality and meet those standards is something we see coming down the road very quickly as a requirement. And so if we're not prepared to meet those standards, then we could be subject to fines, regulations, or having the ability to manage our own future taken away from us. I have to say that we, in the past, did have this capability, that capability left with the water system sale. We have been unable to fulfill our requirements that we've promised to the other regional governments, and so this is a prudent investment, just as the city so prudently invested some of the water fund money into ensuring that, knowing that Gatsby 66 and 68 were going to be implemented, I hope I have those numbers right, Mr. LaContra, that would compel cities to cough up money to be provided to a pension fund for their employees or otherwise face a risk to their credit rating. We looked at that and planned to meet that need, and so this is, again, a way of meeting and being prudent of meeting future requirements that we can easily see coming down the road. And I think that, you know, my work at, in the COG on the Environmental Energy Planning Group and Water Protection and several others, and Vice Mayor Snyder's work on Transportation Planning Board, makes us very sensitive to knowing what kinds of regulations and requirements would be coming down the road. So let me just say, this is not a feel-good position. This is a position that has merit. There are so many people that thought, well, we will not see a regulation in our lifetime that makes carbon dioxide a pollutant, and here we have it before us. So this is the same kind of planning, this is the same kind of investment. Thank you.
Other folks want to speak to this matter? Mr. Baruch?
So I'll just make my comments brief, since I've talked about this issue at some point extensively. So I support both positions, as I've mentioned earlier, and also some of the items such as the buses, et cetera, but my concern is with how they're being funded, that they're being funded with one-year money for potentially ongoing expenses, which I would support. So I would support these going into the actual budget and paying for them essentially out of operating expenses rather than sort of surplus or one-time money, which I think is, is a problematic way to go, especially since we don't know how they're going to be funded other than, you know, potentially through grants or securing of grants that the position would do. So I wholly agree with Mr. Z that these are very, very important positions, and I'd actually put them into the regular operating budget cycle, and, you know, they could still remain term appointments, but for me, it's one of how do we actually fund positions like this, rather than using surplus and using it to pay for personnel, which I think is just the wrong budgetary mechanism to go. So I support the positions, support some of the items in here, but not how this is being done overall. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes. I want to make one thing perfectly clear, because I have been mischaracterized and misreported as opposing these positions. I'm not opposed to these positions. I've agitated long and hard for the transportation planner. This is the first I've heard about the environmental position, and I fully support it. But if you look at the back of the manager's report, there are six pages of extremely important to some portion of our citizenry and some portion of our city. There are six pages of unfunded priorities, all of which people might feel very strongly about, and many of which might be more appropriately funded with one-time money because they're a one-time expense, which is what our policy says we should do. My objection to the going forward with the first reading for this budget amendment was simply that we had not had clearly presented to us the six pages of alternative items, and there had been no discussion in budget and finance or for council at their work session about the relative merits of anything else on the list. So I don't have any concerns about the items that we're funding. I think they're extremely important to the city, but I think that as a policy decision, we need to make sure that going forward, as a part of our annual budget cycle, that we clearly review all of the priorities that have been identified before we make a proposal, and discuss the reasonings that the other items did not qualify to be the top choices. And I think it's extremely important that as a policy decision going forward, that if we have one-time needs that we can use one-time money for, that that takes priority over funding operating items such as personnel with one-time money. So I fully support the positions that have been proposed. I've reviewed the list. I myself might have made slightly different choices, but I will respect the city manager's judgment that this is the top needs at this time, and I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. Citizen has written me several times, raising some very relevant questions. I think the city manager's background information provided pretty good responses to each of those. I do want to emphasize that while the focus has been on the positions, the reality is that the funding of the other issues, school bus, fire truck, police training, safe routes to schools, emergency generator for the Falls Church Housing Corporation, all strike me as core functions that we're supposed to be performing. And while other jurisdictions may put, what should I say, more stock in, in giving the appearance of fiscal prudence, we have a job to do, and I think we're committed to doing it, and that's what I think these expenditures represent, the basic job of local government. With respect to the two positions, a lot has been said that I agree with. I would note that when we were presenting the air quality results from the region, which are really quite good as a result of a lot of efforts over the past few years, that there's now a new ozone standard which will quadruple the region's exceedance days unless we get busy doing a few other things we need to do. So I'm hoping this position will help do that and find ways to save money, both in the public sector and in the private sector in terms of energy use. And finally, the transportation planner is an unfortunate necessity in view of the way Richmond is allocating funds, much more to region projects. The definition of congestion will be terribly important in the future as to whether it benefits only road building or a more multimodal approach, and hence benefiting our citizens. So for all these reasons, I support this, but it's taken with, in the context of the general comments about budgeting in the future, and I'm sure we'll take those onboard and look at them as we do future budgeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there other comments from anyone? I would, I'm going to support this proposal, but I do share the concerns of some of my colleagues, Mr. Baruch, Ms. Oliver, and my support will be contingent upon us reevaluating these positions next year and hopefully coming up a way to fund these that is, quote, "sustainable" in furtherance of the positions, because I think it is important that we find a way to support these, these jobs, these positions through grant funding or other means, savings in the city. So that would be my expectation when this comes around next year. Thank you, Ms. Oliver, or Ms. Connolly?
I'd just like to say that the Budget and Finance Committee of Council is going to be taking up at our meeting in November, how things come off the unfunded needs list, how that works throughout the year, and also how, how the 12-month budget calendar works in response to some of the concerns that we have here. So I think it would be great going forward if we would be able to, be able to enunciate and explain to people exactly how we're moving things off that list, how priorities change over the course of the year, and what budgeting looks like in August as well as in April.
Thank you very much. Okay, are we ready to go ahead and have a motion?
I will move to adopt TO 15-12.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yeah.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Can we move on to the next item? Looks like it's a consent agenda, is that right? Mr. Shields?
Mayor Tarter, members of council, we have a supplemental agreement for the jailing of offenders from the City of Falls Church by the County of Arlington, Virginia. This is a supplemental agreement to our current agreement with Arlington County for this purpose, and the supplemental agreement is simply to extend the term so that it would go forward unless either party asks to terminate with adequate notice. The other item on the consent calendar is the agreement for judicial and public safety services agreement between Arlington County and the City of Falls Church. This, very similarly, just has a supplement to it that would extend the term of that agreement. There are no other changes to the substance of the agreement. This agreement deals with the circuit courts, the general district courts, the way that we operate our, with the Commonwealth Attorney, our U911 call center, the use of our shared infrastructure for our radio systems, and other programs such as that. Those are the two items on the consent calendar.
There's three.
I'm sorry. And this was actually the first item on the consent calendar. This is a resolution to authorize the application for funding from the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program for FY 2017, and we were proposed to put forward a grant application of the amount of a total of $500,000, and that would be $300,000 for, to move the Park Avenue Great Streets project forward, and then $200,000 for funding for WNOD trail improvements. The planning process for that is underway right now. Both of these projects are in the adopted capital improvements program. However, they're contingent upon us getting funding for them through a stream such as this. Both of these grants would require a 20% local match, so if we're successful in getting both grants, that would require $100,000 capital contribution, which would be part of our consideration for FY 2017 if we're successful in getting these grants.
Before we get to that, I'll just open this up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment as to these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Baruch?
So the transportation, this is a matter of, or on the transportation issues, those are drafted as a resolution. Can we take them up as a consent item?
What's helpful when we apply for the grants is to show the resolution, so it shows that it has the elected body's support.
But we can take it up as a consent?
Yes.
You can do a resolution on the consent calendar.
Thank you. And given that this is an application that's going to the federal government, I don't think there's any conflict with me voting on it, but my name should not appear on any documents that go with this application, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move all three items on the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it? Okay, let's move to the next item. Our next item is a closed session, which is going to be very brief, so if any of the members of the public want to speak to members of council, I think this will be a very quick item. I don't think we'll be in closed session, we're probably going to go in the room right behind us, but I don't think we'll be more than five minutes or so, and then we'll come out and finish the remaining business on the agenda, which is not much, and then the meeting will conclude. But we're going to go in closed session for about five to 10 minutes and come back out. So do we have a motion? Let's see, upon a motion made by council member...
Snyder.
And seconded by a council member...
Connolly.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the advice of council, in particular, a request for approval of a conflicts waiver. Councilor Baruch?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Oliver?
Yes.
Councilor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilor Z?
Yes.
Councilor Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go in the back room for five minutes, and we'll be right back out. Thank you all.[1613.61]